Good evening, everyone. We're going to get started this evening. This is the Finance Committee meeting of the North Penn School Board. I will call the meeting to order, and if we could begin by standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to comply. Thank you, Mr. D'Azio. First on the agenda tonight, we have a LERTA request, and I'd like to introduce Mr. John Westman, Westrum, I'm sorry, Chairman and CEO of Westrum Development Company. Mr. Westrum is going to give an overview regarding the request for a LERTA for three parcels, actually, located off of South Broad Street in Lansdale, right across from the Borough Building on Vine Street, basically. So, Mr. Westrum, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I'm going to try to make this relatively short, and I wanted to talk to you a little bit about, sorry, I was a little bit confused there, okay. Talk to you a little bit about our presentation, and I know you've got three screens here. My name's John Westrum, Chairman and CEO of Westrum Development Company. What we're going to talk about tonight are a little bit about who we are, what our experiences are, a little about the site, a little about current conditions, development obstacles, et cetera, et cetera, and ask for some support, and hopefully you'll appreciate or approve or like what we have to talk about. A little bit about us, been in business for 30-plus years, built 100-plus communities, done all sorts of things. I'll let the pictures kind of speak for themselves, 30-plus years, again, in business, and have done a lot of things for, basically, Bucks, Montgomery, Chester, Delaware, Philadelphia Counties, and also New Jersey. Locally, you may know the Lansdale Catholic site, we built that probably like 15, 20 years ago, built in the North Penn School District, Pebble Ridge Farms, Tohoe Menson, Meadow Lane Farms, Tall Pines is in Horsham, Charter Oaks is in Upper Gwinnett, a lot of different areas around, we're not unfamiliar with North Penn area. As people really know, the Lansdale Borough is something that is on the rise and trying to increase itself and get better. They are attracting more residents, they're also attracting businesses. We like the city, the town of Lansdale and feel it's a great place for our product that we're proposing. Our site is, as Steve said, I'm going to point, use this, it's a multiple of parcels.
... train station, across from the municipal building. Currently, this site is a, they're really two slash three properties with two distinct property owners. The Lansdale Parking Authority has a parcel right out in front, and we want to develop that parcel with the parking area for the Borough with our proposal. And this property has been long vacant, it's an abandoned industrial building, it's functionally obsolete, it is right near the Superfund Site of Lansdale, and there have been several other developments that have tried to do things here and have failed because there's a lot of site conditions around this property that really make it difficult to develop. And the big one is the environmental concerns. As I said, there's a Superfund Site that is part of, Superfund Site Number Six. There's groundwater and soil contamination, which we would have to remediate, we already have sunk close to $100,000 worth of wells into the area, as well as meeting with DEP, Army Corps of Engineer, and other agencies in order to determine what has to happen. Our estimated costs are over $1 million to do that. As I said, we've put lots of wells in at this point. We have to put a soil vapor barrier to make everything, there's no vapor that can escape. We've done all surface water analysis. The good thing about it is, is that it will have public water and public sewer. We're not planting plants there, nobody's eating tomatoes, we're not harvesting corn, et cetera. But we have to do a lot of things to make everything work, and in our rental model, it's much better than a homeownership, and we will do an Act Two remediation, and we've done probably 10 Act Two remediations in our history already. So, it's, addressing these site conditions will really help out the public health and welfare of the town of Ambler by having this site be developed.
Before we go, if you don't mind, we are televising, and I'm not sure, first of all, if everybody around the table knows what an Act Two remediation, but clearly we'll have people watching that would probably appreciate a little more explanation of what an Act Two remediation is.
Act Two basically brings, from the Department of Environmental Protection, brings a site back to residential standards that, or depending upon what standards the property is developed to, and the Act Two shows you that there's a no further action. That means that what you're proposing to do, and in our case, it's typically putting soil vapor barriers, paving the surface, and promoting the ability to not disturb any of the environmentally contaminated areas, and not having a means to get to it. The, having public water and public sewer is probably the biggest thing that allows, there's no wells there, and that's where the contamination really has been problematic, so there's no drinking water that would occur. Our Act Two, by developing this property and doing those remediation techniques, would then allow for a no further action letter and criteria provided by the Department of Environmental Protection. Is that an adequate explanation?
Question?
Yes.
You mentioned Ambler. What does Ambler have to do with Lansdale?
Did I? I'm sorry. I apologize.
Okay. That's what I thought it was.
I totally apologize. I redeveloped most of Ambler, so it must have been in my head about talking, because I apologize. Lansdale's a great place to work, to live.
Much better than Ambler.
I like Ambler, too, but anyway.
No offense, but I used to work there.
So, the natural, there is a lot of acres that come onto the site from stormwater runoff, kind of going through all the other things, that we would create stormwater systems that allow no more issues really to occur than currently exist today, and actually help them in the future to remediate any future concerns. So, current status of the approval process in Lansdale is strong support from the Borough. We anticipate construction to start in the second quarter of next year. We've already had zoning approval to approve this, we made a land development submission, we have gotten a little bit hung up with our Act Two environmental remediation plan because they want more wells to be sunk. So, we're spending money, more money and more money to try to do this, to get the property in the position to be developed, and we feel confident that we'll be successful because we've done that many times in the past. So, what is it that we're proposing here? We're proposing our Luxor Lifestyle Apartment brands, and we've already built this in another municipality, and we have other ones going, being built right now. But the key to this brand is that it's a self-contained, highly amenitized, technologically advanced, and socially integrated environment, basically an all-inclusive concept of living. And it has great onsite amenities. We have our Chief Lifestyle Coordinator, who I correlate to those of you who have ever seen the Love Boat, the Julie McCoy. Basically, she coordinates everything that goes on and makes sure that everybody's having fun, and we do that almost on a nightly event, or at least every couple nights and days. Proof of Concept has already been done, located in Norristown. That project's been developed for three-plus years now. We're currently developing under construction in Ballackinwood, and we have another property that we're starting in Westchester in the next two weeks. We've been around for 30-plus years, so you know who we are. It's a $35 million to $40 million investment in the economy. It helps answer a lot of the local demographic demand on housing, and the key part of this is that it generates a lot of economic impact for taxing authorities with limited public services. And as you'll see when I show you some of the pictures, is that it's designed for millennials, predominantly, and empty nesters, but more so for millennials. It's not a conducive place for school-aged children, and there's limited burden on the school districts, and it drives the demographic to support the local businesses. And what we say is that, you know, the renters of today are tomorrow's homebuyers in the Borough of Lansdale, which is important. All the pictures that you'll see behind you or in front of you or on the sides here are all actual photos of the product and the people. There's no shots here of canned, or, you know, stock photos off the shelf. These are all people enjoying themselves in our community, and you can kind of see who the demographic target market is and who participates and lives in our communities. The reason why this is conducive for the target market that we have is because it's all, if you've ever been to a boutique hotel, we start with a kind of a cyber café at the entranceway. We have a state-of-the-art fitness center. Everything is all-inclusive and all-enclosed right in the main lobby area. We have complimentary beverage stations, we have our interactive yoga studios, we have our gaming areas, pool tables, shuffleboard, foosball tables, we have our model units right there. And the key is this, the Imbibe BYOB Bar and media entertainment area. We have, if you've ever been to some of these fancy places where they've got big giant screens, we have four 70-inch TV screens all melded together, and you have a lot of interaction with people that will come down and enjoy themselves in the lobby area. We have bathrooms there, we have our leasing and our lifestyle coordinator, all centrally located in the main hub of the building. And what we've designed is, we've designed all these amenities for everyone so that the spaces that they live in are much smaller. So, imagine like a cruise ship without water, you have a smaller living area, but we want you to participate and use all the amenities that we have. And I didn't show you the pools and the courtyards and other things, I'm trying to keep this brief. But this is a standard unit, which is about 600 square feet. This has a modern kitchen, a comfy dining area, lounge area. We do not put balconies on our product because we don't want people to put stuff out there or throw cigarettes off because it's a non-smoking building. And quite frankly, after building for 30-plus years, we find that balconies sometimes can leak, and we don't want to deal with that. However, there's glass galore, there's abundance of natural light, washer and dryer in each unit, large closets, modern bathrooms, and a flex space. This flex space can be a den, it could be a game room, it could be, it could be a nursery. We've had kids that are born in our facility, not many that are of school age, but I'll show you that in a minute. The reason why we talk about our target market is this is not big two- and three-bedroom units. This is not a family environment, and it's designed not to be that. Out of the 100% of the units, 88% of the units are one-bedroom or studio. We have 12% that are two-bedrooms, and those are predominantly, at least in our existing product, roommate bases. So, what does that do for the schools districts? And what we've used here is that we say smaller units equals smaller households equals fewer school-aged children. We're using data that was conducted by the Montgomery County Planning Commission that shows realistically on par of any new development that for each 100 units that are built, about six school-aged children are generated, and for this type of a product. And our current proof-of-concept data is already done, and we can show that we really have, in the 195 units that we have out there, we have four school-aged children. So, it's two per 100 units, and the most that we've ever had was six, and predominantly these are in divorce situations so that the occupant of the building is already, the school-aged children are already going to the school district in itself already. So, there's really no additional add-on, at least in our particular properties. Anyway, that's just kind of telling you how it works. So, what does this mean to the municipality? Why, and the school district? Why is this something that you might embrace? Well, first of all, right now, the entire tax burden is $28,754. Basically, using the common level ratio of reassessment, this property will generate about 20 times more in real estate taxes, going from $28,000 to $607,000. And for the school district, which is really what you, I'm sorry, what is more of a concern is that it goes from $21,000 to $453,000. And again, that's using the common level ratio. If we were to use a similar comp analysis, it would be similar, and this is about 17 times, going from $21,000 to $383,000, and we used the Silk Factory Lofts as our competitive analysis there. So, what we're doing is, we're proposing, we've done this in other municipalities, is proposing to utilize the state-permitted LERTA program, which has to be approved by the school district, the county, and the municipality. And we have, we have a non-opposition from the Borough, meaning that they always want to say, "Go to the group that has the most impact," and that would be the school board, which is why we're here. So, if we were to follow the LERTA program, which I know that you are all familiar with, it goes where it's a 10%, it goes from what today's taxes are being paid to 100% of real estate taxes over a 10-year period in a graduated basis, 10% per year. So, if you were to look at property as is over a 10-year period, that property is generating a total of $287,000. If it were to be done without LERTA, it generates $6 million, which really makes the property infeasible. And with all the environmental situations that we have to deal with, what we have to do, it just makes the property infeasible. With LERTA, it's almost 50% of that, and it goes down to about $3.4 million. The important part to look at is, what is it that our property generates for the school district? How does it evaluate? So, we took your, the total budget for the school district in 2020 of $267 million, we divided by the number of students. Our cost per student is approximately $20,749. If you were to look at how many schoolchildren that we estimate that we'll create, we are generating a cost at the $20,749 of about $82,000 per year. Even on the average for the LERTA, you would see that we're generating on average $250,000 per year in school taxes, which is well above the $82,997, or on average $166,556 per year. The other part about it is, is that the only year, and we would probably not be fully occupied, the only year that there would be any type of deficit would be in year one because that would be less than the $82,000 by the time we get to year two, we're already at $93,000. So, there's really no detriment. If the project does not get built, there's no increase in revenue for the school district throughout the life of the project. We think that $166,000 a year, you know, it's a drop in the bucket on $267 million, but it's better than having the opposite way. We also know that the school board has adopted a LERTA, and thank you very much for being progressive in doing that, has done LERTAs in two other areas, and we think that our hardships that we have of trying to redevelop the town of Lansdale, excuse me, is very important, and taking an environmentally challenged property off the books and creating into something new and creative, as well as being a benefit for the town, as well as the school district and everyone around, is positive. When we developed our Luxor property in Norristown, we also went through the LERTA process. We were fully supported 100% by the Norristown School District, the county, and the municipality. And we are in year three of the first LERTA and year two of the second building that we did, both of which would not have been developed had we not been able to do that. So, in summary, we generate a lot of economic impact for the taxing authorities. We think there's limited public services, limited burden on the school district. The concerns in the environmental parcel, part of it, make it really very, almost non-developable if we can't get some type of a benefit in this respect. And the remediation will help everybody. As I said, there's been various failed attempts in the past. There were townhouses proposed there, there were other uses that were there. Nothing seemed to work correctly with the municipality, and also, I guess, with the school board, but we think that we have something that's really positive for it. So, what we're asking for tonight is for the embracement of this Luxor concept, understanding what the extenuating site conditions are of this project, and address the tax challenges, which we think ultimately, on the long-term basis, are very positive. And we'd also welcome you, if you'd like to visit our Luxor location in Norristown, come see it, come see how it operates, come see if there's children there, come see what our demographics are, and we think that you would like it. So, with that, I'll take any questions.
I have a few, but I will defer to everyone else first. So, do you want to start?
Sure. I heard from your presentation, sir, thank you for coming and seeing us this evening.
Thank you.
I heard from your presentation that there's some strong Lansdale Borough Council support, but they also said to come here first. I'm wondering if you've gone to the council as a whole, if you were just in the committee structure up until this point?
I don't have that exact answer. We went, we addressed it with the manager because we knew we needed, the numbers weren't working to be able to make this viable, and you have to look at various different ways. And it was told to us by, in staff, that the council doesn't have, they take a no-opposition position because this is the 100 or 1,000-pound gorilla in the room on anything. So, if we were able to get your support, they, we believe that they would fall in line. We can certainly bring it to council if that would be a request.
Thank you. My second question, and I'll let my colleagues have their questions. The previous LERTA that we were working with a different developer in Tohoe Menson illustrated a number of positives, not just for the school board or the school district financially, but also for building the community. I wonder if you might be able to tell us, would there be more jobs for our community members? Would other benefits be involved?
Yes, there are 200-plus residents that would be occupying the building, and again, they're all of working age. There is tax benefits, there's the town being revitalized, the fact that we're right on the train, that we're a quarter of a mile from the train station, and it's all about the revitalization of Lansdale. As I misspoke before about the town of Ambler, I was involved 20, almost 20 years ago with redeveloping that whole entire town. And Lansdale, I served on the Montgomery County Revitalization Board back then, and Lansdale was trying to be Ambler. And it appears that it's had starts and stops, it had a big recession in the middle, which kind of brought, did not really let Lansdale get going as much as Ambler did, but it's there. And the more people that you have in the town, the better that it will be, plus the fact that by us developing this property also helps to do the Lansdale Parking Authority to get them to develop that parking area. They want to make a, there's kind of a shed there that they want to redo into, whether it's a farmer's market or some type of community benefit there, and our residents would clearly partake in a lot of activities in the town of Lansdale.
Terry, anything?
Follow on to 10th question. I thought his question was asking, will developing this Luxor apartment bring jobs directly to or through Luxor? Like, if it was a hotel, you'd be bringing in housekeeping.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I was talking about the hole. The answer to that question is, I am sure, yes. The amount of people, though, that would be there, it's limited. We only have a staff of about eight FTEs on, in general, because most of our stuff is all technological. It's very much with, you have a fob that gets you everywhere, and that's really what happens. We have leasing agents, we have our Community Lifestyle Director, we have a community manager, we have about five different maintenance people that, and I can't give you an exact answer for the site in Norristown, but I know that there are Norristown residents that are there. The other part, which we did in Norristown, which I'm not adverse to doing here, is that we tracked local employment for the people that were building the property. And we had a significant amount of hours that were done by local folks. It was not contractors coming from New Jersey and Delaware and other places. It was very concentrated. As a matter of fact, when we built the one in Norristown, there were more people from Tohoe Menson and Harleysville than there was really from Norristown because of the skilled labor.
Thank you.
Christian?
I don't have any questions.
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Westrum.
I have a son that lived at Riverwalk in Concha-Hawken, so it is a very nice facility with a lot of amenities, I can attest to that. I'm looking at the other similar products that you have here. How many units are you planning?
It's 195 in this particular building.
Okay, so it's a lot smaller than the Concha-Hawken or the King of Prussia.
Yes, and they're different buildings, and I'm familiar with Riverwalk as well. Ours is much more, Riverwalk has places, like the clubhouse is in a different location than really in the main part of the building. Ours is, when you walk into that building, you're energized because there's always something going on right there. So, it's a little bit different, but, and again, they're smaller units, but surrounding all of the common area amenities.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Thank you very much for the presentation, especially the level of detail. The question I have, you obviously have done your homework, and with our latest LERTA that was approved, we did have a change, though, to the timeframe, and would like to know what your opinion is on having a shorter timeframe as opposed to the current 10-year.
We would prefer a 10-year. We are open to other suggestions. We have to make sure, we have to make sure everything's viable. I mean, what happens in apartments development, it's basically revenues minus expenses, and every year with the taxes that go up so much, so to speak, or so high in the beginning, we need to fill the building, we need to start to repay some of the debt, we need to get the building to full occupancy. 195 units is not absorbed in less than about two years. So, we'd prefer to have it be the straight-line 10, but we are open to alternatives. If it's one to 10, that's going to be really hard.
Right, and that's, it's obvious you bring a strong track record, and so there's no questioning what you are proposing. I would be interested if we at least saw a model then that at least takes back off the 10 years. We're certainly not looking for one, and we can respect what you're doing to redevelop the space, but from the, at least one board member's interest, I'd like to optimize or, you know, get our max amount out as opposed to stretching this over 10 years.
You'd like to accelerate the...
Yeah, if you could, you know, provide another model with some different years.
And I'm not, we've done LERTAs in the past, I'm not exact, I know that you can modify from a 10. I just don't know whether it has to be a consistent, if you go to a 5, it's 20, 20, 20, or can it be modeled? I don't remember reading the code exactly how it is, can be modified. I mean, I've heard of straight-line where it's, you know, it's 20, 20, 20, 20, 20, 10, 10, 10, 10, 10, all the way for 10 years. Our biggest issue especially is in the first four to five years, where we're paying all that taxes without having the revenue until we get full occupancy.
And that's, I definitely want to respect that. It would help us, I think, in the decision-making process, so to see that model, and I'm deferring to you to provide those years. Obviously, probably, we're not asking for the three or four, but that would be helpful. I think that Mr. Scrocky could probably provide some of the details that could help you with any of that modeling.
We're happy to do that.
Thank you.
This kind of goes a little bit to that issue of moving to full occupancy, but I wonder if you could speak a little bit to the market research that you've done to, to kind of, you know, do, are there, is there a need or is there a market for these units? There seems to be a lot added, you know, the Silk Lofts, there are a few that have kind of come into Lansdale, and I do see that they're fully occupied, but is there, are you coming in at the tail end of this? Are you anticipating that there won't be full occupancy? Because it also does mark a change, I think, for the local community. I'm a Lansdale Borough resident, and my view of Lansdale is shifting, right? So, from being, you know, kind of single-family homes or mixed-family homes to kind of more apartments, it's, the community is shifting, and I'm just wondering what market research you're basing this on.
So, we've done extensive market research of demand, and what is really happening is that some of these areas that, let's take Philadelphia first of all, first and foremost. The city has blossomed with millennials and people, and again, I didn't have all the data up there, I have it in my portfolio, is that the millennials are now, have exceeded the number of baby boomers. There's 80 million millennials and there's 77 million millennial, 80 million millennials and 76 million baby boomers. And we, as baby boomers, are getting older, so there's going to be less of us. Millennials are kind of staying the same. The millennial population is actually hitting its prime right now when they're actually moving out of their parents' basements and everything else, for those of you who may have millennials. And the TOD aspect of it, the transit-oriented development aspect, being right on the train line, is huge, and people are thriving to get to these small towns and boroughs where I live, I have a residence in the city of Philadelphia, and I will tell you that it gets, it's gotten a little bit scary. There's a lot of people around, and not necessarily all the right people around. And some people are actually looking to go closer to where they work than, a lot of people are living in the city and commuting out. When I first moved in the city, it was like, in the... And the, we, as baby boomers are getting older, so there's going to be less of us. Millennials are kind of staying the same. The millennial population is actually hitting its prime right now, when they're, when they're actually moving out of their parents' basements and everything else, for those of you who may have millennials. And the TOD aspect of it, the transfer, the transit-oriented development aspect, being right on the train line, is huge. And people are thriving to get to these small towns and boroughs where, I live, I have a residence in Phila, the city of Philadelphia, and I will tell you that it gets, it, it, it's gotten a little bit scary. There's a lot of people around, not necessarily all the right people around. And some people are actually looking to go closer to where they work than, a lot of people are living in the city and commuting out. When I first moved in the city, it was like, in the morning, you would see a, a big commute on 76 going into the city. Now you see a big commute going out of the city. And if you look at Ambler, you look at Phoenixville, you look at King of Precia, what they've done, the, people breed people, and that's one of the things that Lansdale can bring. I also think that, that, you know, something like Lansdale, in order for it to succeed commercially and re, with retail, there has to be more bodies on the Main Street. We're a quarter of a, we're, we're three blocks away from the Main Street. So, you know, the, our market research indicates that we would be less priced than King of Precia, but we provide an access point that, right now, King of Precia can't provide a, a train to the city of Philadelphia like, you know, like that. I hope that answers the question.
All right. So I, I have just a couple of quick questions. You, you talk, you've talked a little bit about, or on a few occasions, about how the project is not feasible without LARDA support.
Yeah.
But talk to me a little bit about what that means, because initially you had said that the amount of remediation that needs to be done is somewhere between $500,000 and $1 million to get the property remediated. So is that $500,000 to $1 million, is that what's causing the project to be not feasible?
There are a couple of things. First and foremost is, is that, that $500,000 to $1 million, or, it's probably going to be much more than that at this point. We, we just had a meeting with the Army Corps of Engineers to revive, to review some things. But it, that, the, the cost of upfront money is close to a half a million, then there's probably another $1 million in, in cost to remediate. Secondly is, what we're all experiencing right now is that costs are going up like crazy. I'm not going to blame tariffs or anything else, just I will just tell you that labor and material have gone up 20-plus percent in the last two years, and rents have not followed that amount. So it's important for us to keep a number around the $1,500 a month range. We strive between 1,250 and 1,750 from our smallest to largest, and those numbers are not reaching an investment threshold that we can gather investors on based upon what's going on. And, and a lot of that, again, is that, that startup phase, number one, and number two is that there is the, the lease-up part. So first, when you, month one, you might only have 10 people in the building, and meanwhile, you've got to cover all, everything, including taxes and everything else. So the operating expenses are what really is driving the issue. And over a 10-year period, or possibly a little less, we can ramp up our, our activity. We have full confidence that Lansdale, by having more people in the community, will become a, a higher level of desired destination.
So I think, again, just speaking as, you know, one individual, I, I think I echo what Mr. Kossel was saying a few moments ago. I'd like to see a model a little bit shorter. It helps, because, because in my mind, the, the reason why we're considering LARDA is because there's contamination on the property. And you've, you've kind of quantified what that level of contamination is, whether it's a half a million, or 1 million, or one and a half, or, or even a little bit more than that. And so if we can, if we can find a model that helps you recover the costs that are needed to be put into the property to help remediate the environmental concerns that are on the property, I think, to me, conceptually, that makes sense. I don't know, you know, the, the other things that you allude to with, with tariffs and the cost of labor, everybody's dealing with those things. There's nothing unique to this property with respect to those costs. So I, too, would just be interested in seeing what a shorter period of, of LARDA would do. That's the, that's what we did, that's what this committee did with the last LARDA that we just approved. So those, those are just my thoughts. And perhaps you can work with, with, with Steve and...
We'll work with Steve on, on showing some different things that, that allow you to, you know, see where we are and what we need.
Okay.
So I also have a few, just clarifying questions. Kurt Dietrich, Superintendent.
Kurt.
Thank you for the presentation. Regarding this slide with Lansdale Parking Authority owns adjacent parcel, could you just expand a little more on what that means?
So in order for us to access the site, we actually have to go through, well, there are, there are paper streets that allow us to access right across from the borough along the railroad tracks, but the borough parking authority owns that portion of land. And by us developing, we'll assist, because we're going to basically bring, pay for improvements going in that they would not have to pay for. So they've raised enough money to do a, a large part of that project, but there are parts that we would be supporting, because we have to put the road in, we'd have to put the, the road in anyway. So the, I, I, I could have to go back to the, the picture, but it's a triangular-shaped parcel that the authority has. Ours is much more of a square parcel. And by us developing our property, it reduces the cost and makes it easier to get done to have the parking authority have additional parking. Now, is parking a major problem right now in Lansdale? Not necessarily. I remember when we redeveloped Ambler, the parking was not a problem back then either. Now you go on a, on a Friday night, you're, you're not getting anywhere unless you go to the big giant Septa lot. So it's something that you really, it, they would facilitate things.
Okay. You mentioned there are the owners of that. How long have you owned the properties that we're talking about tonight?
We do not own them. We are the equitable owner. So we, we do, we never own properties until we have full approvals and that it's viable, because we're not speculators, we're developers, where we basically go through the approval process and take all the risk of, of getting the approvals, and then, at the time we get approvals, then we will purchase the property and we can actually build on it. So we are not the owners, we're the equitable owners. It's like buying a house. If you were, if you were going to buy, you know, a house, you sign an agreement of sale that you're going to close on it in 90 days or whatever, subject to your home inspection, your this, that, and the other thing. In our case, we, we buy properties, and most develop, large developers do also, is you'll buy it conditioned upon obtaining all the approvals. So if this doesn't, if we can't make it financially feasible, we'll cut our losses and walk away.
Who owns the property now?
It's two different property owners that own the property, and we have it under agreement with them.
Has it been, is it, is the property for sale, or has it been for sale?
It, it has had three or four different buyers in the past that couldn't make it work.
Okay.
To answer your question, two parcels are owned by an organization called Real Pro Enterprises, and the third parcel is owned by 111 South Broad Street LLC.
And those two owners, where are they, what's their, where are they located?
I don't have that information.
One is, one is located in Upper Gwinnett, right down the street, and the other is, I believe, more on the Main Line area, who had bought the building on speculation, so to speak, many years ago. And they, they had, they did some environmental remediation already through some things, but not very much.
Mr. Westrom, you've been the equitable owner of the three parcels in question since July 2018, is that correct?
I believe that's, yeah, somewhere, yes.
So about a year.
About a year.
So it's complicated.
It's complicated. Our business is not easy, it really isn't.
It's complicated in that you have a number in mind, you've had some discussions with the actual owners about that number, you've done some work on this, and it looks like it's something that's going to be costly to redevelop, if you will. And you're looking to see if we might be interested in participating in some of that effort.
We, we have to evaluate things on a very detailed financial model. We have a certain sale price for the purchase price of the property, the same as if you were buy, you know, agree to buy a house. And we also know how much it costs to do the, the entitlements, and they keep going up in price because we find and find more environmental issues. In order to make this all work, based upon where the, the studies have come in, you know, we know what we have to, what we have to do, and this is really, the, the annual operating expenses for an apartment building are the biggest issue, and the taxes are the biggest number of the annual operating expenses.
I think it was referenced earlier, one of the reasons we would do this, if we do choose to do it, would be that there are environmental concerns on the property.
Correct. We would remediate them.
But simplistically, wouldn't that seem to indicate that perhaps the purchase price is too large? Like there are more problems with the property than can be easily solved?
I would love for you to help me negotiate, please.
Well, that's a simplistic way of looking at it, suppose.
I, I agree.
But just to the average guy like me, it looks like that could be perhaps part of the consideration.
It, we have had a, a number of discussions with the sellers about things that are going on, and they pretty much have been where they are. And whether or not, so if it, if, if it doesn't happen, it just means that the property will sit the way it is with the current, under the current condition.
Thank you for that. So I think I heard you say that you were looking at probably four school-age children per 100 units?
Two per 100.
Oh, two?
Yep.
Okay. All right. And you said there's a superfund site, but this is not...
It's part, it's part, it's, it's part of the extent, it is not the cause of the superfund site, but it's in the quadrant, the superfund quadrant. So there has to be an act two done on it with all of the remediation approvals.
Okay.
It's not the cause of the superfund site, there's, there's a difference. It's part of the, of the site, but it's not the causing property.
So it would seem we should be looking at that also as we make a decision. Are there neighboring properties there that are also perhaps subject to redevelopment that are a part of the superfund site? And what if any bearing does that have on any of the...
Certainly look at. I don't really, I mean, most of them have been developed or have existing houses on them that are not that large. This is really the only large parcel in that particular zone.
Okay. All right. Well, as the Superintendent, I would recommend that we take this under advisement, and I think there were some very good comments made tonight, and we could look at some other possibilities and decide if, in fact, we want to do the, do the LARDA or not.
Thank you very much for your time. And again, the offer is open. If there's a time that anyone would like to go visit another site to see the demographic or the, the client, we'd be happy to do so. So thank you very much.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, bond refunding.
Okay, we're going to transition the slides here, and I'd like to introduce Mr. John Frye from PFM. John is going to give a brief presentation. The document is loaded in Board Docs. We have an opportunity to refinance or refund three bond issues. John is going to cover that. We do need to transition over to the slide deck.
Do you have it in the back? Yeah, it's in the back. The, can you get this flash drive in the back? Yeah. Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Again, my name is John Frye from PFM, here tonight to talk about a refinancing opportunity to save the district some debt service payments on some, a portion of its existing debt. As the slides are getting loaded, we're, we're here, as, as you probably all know, over the last year or so, the interest rate markets have certainly taken a drastic turn, whereas in 2018, interest rates were forecasted to go higher. The Fed raised rates four different times, and then all of a sudden, over the last, in 2019, tides have turned, be it the trade wars, be it international rates, and some, some places negative. And as early as, well, just like in August, the Fed did decrease rates, and it's expected that next week they'll be decreasing rates again. So that's already priced in on, on the, I think, in the front, on the board members' laptops, you said you have the presentation? Okay, great. Page two there, the interest rate chart, you can see they really have plummeted at the bottom of the page. And why we're here tonight is because a year ago, you did not have any refinancing opportunities, but you do now because of that. Page three in your handout, then, is the overall debt summary of the district, and what we've highlighted there in the red oval there are the three bonds that we're targeting, the 13, 14, and 15 bonds. You can see they're all very short and pay off very quickly, and all really at, at low rates, which is why they were not really a refinancing target, but when the rates have fallen to where they're at, they, they have become one. So moving on to page four, in the middle of the page there is kind of the summary of those three different sets of bonds. Most of them, or all of them, are in the $9 to $10 million range. They're all currently callable, with the 2015 bonds on the far right, they have a call date of March 1 of '20, so the earliest we can settle on that one is December of, of this year. So it kind of works out very nicely that we can refund all three of these into one bond issue, which also saves on pain agent fees, because you're consolidating from three down to one. With rates as they're at about today, approximately, they're a number 2A, we think we can save about a half a million dollars net to the district. Again, it is interest rate sensitive. That savings was negative months ago. It is there now. It would take us about a little over a month to get to the market and lock in rates, but that's our, our current estimate. Down at the bottom of the page, some more technical details, but the, the district has already issued, as you know, $10 million, thereabouts, in the early part of the year for capital projects, because this was not anticipated that this refinancing would occur. So that was issued as bank-qualified and got low rates, and bank-qualified gives you a lower, lower interest rates and a shorter call provision. Because of that, and we have a lot of clients in the same situation, where now, in order to not change the tax status of that bond you've already issued, we have to satisfy a couple IRS tests that your bond counsel kind of is on her consultation, and we do this again, a lot because of the nature of the markets right now. One of the things is, we would have to contribute cash to district at settlement instead of borrowing more money, would have to contribute in our, our estimates right now, about $440,000 at settlement in December, in order to reduce the bonds to satisfy this one test that we don't overissue an amount of bonds. The other thing is to make the bonds slightly pay off a little more rapidly. Again, to satisfy that test, we may move payment dates from their current March 1 to January 15. Factoring all those technicalities in, the $506,000 that we're showing as an estimate is net of all those things. So on page five, just to show you what the current cash flows would look like, if we could lock this all in currently, the bonds, again, pay off, all of them pay off by 2025. And on the far-right column area, you can see the, the annual debt service, I think you scrolled a little too far up on this, there you go. The annual debt service savings, $171,000 in 2020, about break-even in '21, and you can see some, you know, about a quarter of a million dollars in the next couple of years. So the total debt service savings, if you will, is $926,000. But again, the district would put in $440,000 at settlement, get about $20,000 of state reimbursement on that cash, and the net of all those figures is 500, is $506,000. And because you're saving money over time, the, the PV of that is approximately $470,000. But we, we view it as a very significant savings, meaningful savings to the district that wasn't there, you know, six months ago, is there now. We think it'd be an opportune time to try to go get that. So as a timeline for the district, I know you've been through multiple financings previously, but the timeline we've sketched out here is here tonight for the discussion. As you can imagine, a lot of issuers across the, the state and the country are, are doing the same type of thing right now to try to get into the market. We could have your bond counsel draft up a short authorization to proceed that you could pass next week, that just tells the financing team to go forward with the, the financing. We'd start working with Steve as we already kind of started laying that out to go get a credit rating again for these bonds. The district has a very, very strong credit rating of AA1, but we still have to go through that process for each bond issue. But that, that strength, that strong credit rating gives you very low interest rates. So then, participant, or members of the PFM team and your bond counsel will then be back on October 17 for the board meeting. That would be the official debt parameters resolution vote, where you would authorize officially an up to, in a maximum not-to-exceed amount of bonds that you've, and you've done this process before, but that's the official debt resolution vote. With the timing right now that we're laying out with the rating agencies, we think we can be then in the market October 26 via an internet auction to bid this bond issue out to the investors around the country. That's when we'd actually be able to lock in rates, middle, or mid to late October. And again, this would then settle December 3, which is, happens to be the earliest we can settle, because we have 90 days prior to that March 1 of '20 call date. So I, I know that was fairly brief. I'd happy to answer any questions you may have. I know you've been through the process before, but again, it's, I think it's a good opportunity for the district.
Can you just refresh everybody's memory in terms of when a district is contributing cash at closing, what actually happens there? And then is there a suggestion where that cash would come from?
I would say about three days prior to, you know, probably the, right before December 3, you would, you would wire that, whatever amount of money it ends up, we'd, we'd be able to tell you exactly how much that would be on October 22. Then Mr. Skrocky could, you know, use cash. I would let him comment on where he might get it, but just... get it, but just a couple of days prior to December 3, he'd wire the money to your paying agent so it's available for the bond settlement.
So talk to us a little more about physically what happens to that $440,000? Where does it actually go?
It goes into the settlement account. So instead of us issuing more bonds, typically, we would just go issue $440,000 more bonds and, and pay off all the, all the debt. But because we're trying, the, the federal tax code test that we're trying to pass in this instance, because you've already borrowed this year, means that we can't borrow more than the principal amount of bonds that we're refunding. So we kind of have a hard cap about how many bond proceeds we can, we can come up with. Anything more than that, we need to come up with cash. So your cash combined with the bonds would be enough to pay off the old bonds and pay for cost of issuance and credit rating and underwriting discount and so forth. So it's kind of, your cash plus the bonds is enough for us to come up. If, if we didn't have the cash, we wouldn't have enough because we can't raise more bond issue, par amount.
And I would recommend that the $440 be funded from budgetary reserve. We have $1.5 million in budgetary reserve. Keep in mind that will realize the savings of approximately $171,000 in this year's debt service. So that would mean that our net cash impact on budgetary reserve would be about $270,000 this fiscal year.
And then March 1 to, or you said we had to move it up by two months or something? That's each year? We just have to pay a little early in order to meet that test?
Right. It's called the weighted average maturity test, or the WAM test. Again, we can't extend the, the new WAM longer than the old WAM. So in essence, you're paying off your debt, you know, a month and a half quicker, which actually will increase savings a little bit from this level, but it's more of a test that we need to meet in order to make this all, you know, sufficient with the tax code. But you'd be paying, yeah, so all, all your payment dates instead of being March 1 and September 1 would move a month and a half earlier. So you'd be paying off your debt quicker.
Is there any reason why we wouldn't further accelerate that payment? I mean, we have the cash in the bank. If we would save the money in any given fiscal year of making our debt service payments early in the year, which is when we have the most cash in the bank anyway, is that something we should be thinking about?
You're indicating restructuring our other debt?
Well, start with this, but as, just as a matter of general operation.
Moving forward.
Yeah, why wouldn't we?
John, I might need to defer to you on that one. I mean, you're restructuring debt schedules, I mean, if you pay it off early.
Are there penalties with that or anything?
No, as long as it's the same fiscal year, it's, it's kind of indifferent to us or structuring your bonds. Generally, school districts, you know, as you're saying, you're flush with cash, we usually don't try to have it in August.
Right.
But a lot of, a lot of districts have like November payments, we could, we could move it to November, you know, as a, you know, anytime within that fiscal year falling in the fall. We were just trying to, you know, basically move it as minimally as possible, but you could move it even further.
Including principal payments?
Yes.
I just think it's something that we ought to consider. I mean, whether we make a payment November 1 or March 15, from a cash flow standpoint, I don't think it, it hurts us one way or the other, because again, we, we generally have that level of cash. But I, I will defer that to the admin team. I don't know, does anybody have any comments on this? I think it looks like a good idea. I think we ought to move forward on it.
Do you have a slide that shows what our total principal owed will be under the two scenarios? Because we're putting $440,000 in cash to be able to meet that federal requirement.
Page 12 of the, of the handout shows what we estimate the new bonds to look like. So in column two, these, these would be your new principal payments. I mean, this would be your bond issue with the savings over on the far left and, or, excuse me, the far right. Again, it's just, it's a cash outlay at settlement of 400, or whatever that ends up being, in this case, $440,000. And then these would be your semi-annual payments over the life of the transaction.
I think I found page 12. So how does that compare then to what it is now?
All the other, so we can go to the step by step. Remember, there are three different bond issues. Page eight are the 13 bonds, the 2013 bonds. So you can see the principal payments in column two. So column two of page eight, nine, and 10 represent the principal payments that you're making now. Basically, very little upfront, and then they get larger as the years go on because it's wrapping around existing debt. So what we're doing then is consolidating those three different bonds into one new bond on page 12, and trying to basically mimic your old debt service, but reducing it in each year as much as we can. And the level of principal, you know, ultimately will change based on the interest rates and interest rate structure that we receive on the bids the day of the internet.
And did you say you factored in the expected reduction next week, or you did not yet?
Yes, yeah. I mean, well, the market, there's a 96% chance, according to Fed Funds Futures, that the Fed's going to rate, or, excuse me, reduce rates by a quarter basis point next week. But the, the market's anticipating that, so it's, it's baked in. But certainly, there's volatility every week lately. So between now and October 22, things will, you know, likely fluctuate, but this is our current estimate.
I think it's good that we're in a position that we can do this kind of thing. So if we have the ability within the budget to take money from budgetary reserve to be able to do this, the net savings to the taxpayers will be significant.
Correct.
So.
Do we have a number in place? Usually, we put a number that the, the cost savings have to exceed a certain amount in order for us to go. Are we building that in, or is that not recommended this time?
Well, I, my opinion is that if we're anywhere over $100,000 and move forward with it, and as an arbitrary number, it's a moving target, if our net savings, net present value savings is $100,000 or more, in my opinion, we should move forward because they're really, quite honestly, it's unlikely that there'll be another opportunity like this. It's very unlikely. And as John mentioned earlier, that we never expected these three issues would even have, present an opportunity for refunding.
Okay. It's all trying to make our best guess at what the markets will do, and hopefully it'll...
Again, two, two of the bonds already passed their call date, so every day that goes by, you're already, you're kind of losing savings because there's less interest to refund. It's kind of like having a home mortgage that you never thought you'd be able to refinance ever, because it was, and then all of a sudden, you have an opportunity to save anything, you, you know, you could do it. I think you're basically going from low 2% rates to, you know, 1.5%. So it's, it's pretty phenomenal.
Well, the other good news for the taxpayers is we're not kicking the can down the road, we're not extending this, you know, out or anything like that. We are actually paying some things earlier and being a little more aggressive to be able to capitalize on this opportunity with the interest rates, so.
That's right. That's exactly right.
I guess we need a motion to move this forward to action next week, and Steve, you would prepare the resolution?
We would. This would be the authorization to proceed, to give administrative and the financial team the authorization to proceed to get the documents in order for the refunding, and then at the October action meeting would be the official parameters resolution.
Okay. I move that we do that. Do you have a second?
Second. We all suck. I think we're all ready for it.
We need to still vote? We'll give it to Mrs. Ramich. Any other comments or questions? All right, all in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? All right, that will move forward.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Frye.
All right, the next item is the proposed budget calendar, which we would approve next week. Unless there's any questions on the budget calendar, I would just recommend that we move it forward.
If I could just make a few quick notes.
Sure.
Because the primary election is roughly a month earlier next year, basically, our budget process is accelerated a month earlier. So we'll be presenting the preliminary budget for adoption on January 16 this year, it was in February last year. The proposed final budget adoption will be on May 12, and the final budget adoption on June 18.
All right. Well, I, I move that we move the calendar forward. All in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? All right. And then capital fund transfer.
Okay, we discussed this at previous finance committee meetings, and we're at the point now that we're recommending placement of the transfer on the October action meeting. We'll have the final number from our audit at that point in time, and at this point, it appears that we are underspending our budget by about $3.3 million, based on our latest projections, $3.3 million. So $3.3 million is roughly a 1.26% positive variance. That is less than what it was the previous year, it was 1.46 the previous year, 1.26 this year. Again, another indicator that the budget is getting tighter and tighter as the variance figures come down lower and lower. On the revenue side, the positive variance is 1.14%, our latest projection, and these are unaudited figures, but 1.14%. The previous year, the variance was about 1.8%. So again, on the revenue side and the expenditure side, the variances are getting smaller and smaller and smaller each year, and I expect the same for the current fiscal year, for the 1920 fiscal year. So this is on the agenda tonight to have a discussion in terms of what the amount should be. We can transfer up to the amount of the positive variance on the expenditure side, so that would mean that the budget transfer, or the capital reserve transfer could be up to $3,284,503. That's based on our current projection. We'll have the final audit number. So in previous years, last year in particular, we did transfer the full amount of the positive variance on the expenditure side. That was $3.7 million roughly last year. So with the long list of capital improvement projects, I think it's prudent to actually make that transfer for the full amount of three point, roughly $3.3 million. We have presented at the facilities and operations committee meeting a prioritized list of projects for the next 10 years now that has a numerical ranking, and just over the next few years, we have several million dollars worth of capital projects in the pipeline that are currently unfunded. This would go a long way to fund those projects that are of the highest priority. So our recommendation is to transfer, whatever that final number ends up being, if it's 3.3 or 3.1 or 3.5, transfer the unexpended proceeds from the 1819 budget to the Capital Reserve Fund at the October meeting once the final audit numbers are presented.
And Steve, could you just summarize for the board? Clearly, we have that ability because you can move as much as was not expended out of the expenditure budget, but in terms of the impact then to the fund balance, in terms of how the revenues came in, we know that the expenditures were 3.3 million under, and then the anticipated use of fund balance. What will the net then be to the fund balance?
So we had entered the budget year with about a $2.7 million budget deficit in the 1819 year. So if we expense out dollar for dollar, all the expenditures with the capital transfer really boils down to how much more money do we collect on the revenue side? Well, we brought in about $2.9 million in revenue higher than budget. So that means that that would cover the $2.7 million budget deficit plus another $200,000. So the net impact would be an add of roughly $200,000 to the fund balance. Last year, it was roughly $100,000 deduction from the fund balance.
So you heard the administrative recommendation. Clearly, we have the ability to move this to the Capital Reserve. Clearly, we have expended, you know, anticipated expenditures in the Capital Reserve Fund that are substantial, so that's the recommendation. Go ahead and move the full amount of what we could move due to, under-expending the budget, knowing that it will not have an impact on our fund balance materially, so that's the recommendation.
I, I agree with that, and I think instead of naming a specific dollar amount, I think we ought to just leave the motion that whatever the final audit figures are, we transfer whatever that unspent balance is. That would be, that would be my recommendation. That sounded like Tina seconded that, so. Does anybody have comments, questions, anything further? All in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? All right. So that will take place, and that'll be an October transfer.
October, correct. Action meeting.
Okay. And then we're just under our informational items, so I see the Act in, Act 1 index is out, and it's 2.6.
2.6%. That would generate approximately $4.8 million in additional revenue if the full amount was levied in the upcoming fiscal year. Just for a point of reference, the Independent Fiscal Office projected an Act 1 index of 2.3, so it's about 3/10 of a percent higher than what the IFO projection was, 2.6%.
Okay.
And the next item, this is just for information as well, we have published the 2019, 2020 charter school tuition rates. We're required to submit these to the Pennsylvania Department of Education each year, and for those students that we have placed, or students that elect, I should say, to attend a charter or cyber school, that's the tuition we need to pay. $14,416 for a regular education student, $35,869 per special education student. So right now, we have about 105 regular education students in charter schools and about 24 special education students. And also LinkedIn article, Governor Wolf is proposing charter school reform, both, both through executive order and through proposed legislative developments over the coming year. And basically, the thrust of that is to hold charter schools to the same accountability levels as other public schools.
Great. And then finally, we're on to the financial reports. Did anybody have any questions about them? There's, as usual, there's content in the executive content section. Steve, thanks for doing that, as always. I think we'll just have to watch as the year goes on. EIT always fluctuates pretty significantly through the year, but it looks like we didn't have a great month in July.
No, July was not a good month in EIT. August was a better month, so we're watching that closely. Little concern about the realty transfer tax, that has really tapered off over the past couple of months. A most concern about investment income, as I noted in my report, with the Fed making one cut already this fiscal year, 25 basis points, probably at least one more this calendar year. That, no question, will have an impact on our investment income. Our main depository account is directly looked, linked to the upper end of the Fed fund rate, which right now is 2.25%. So I'm concerned that we may not be able to realize our budget figure. Last year, we generated over $1 million above our budget figure for investment income. So that's something, obviously, we'll continue to monitor closely and report on monthly.
Sure. Yeah, again, it's, it's something I think we'll just watch. The EIT doesn't completely scare me at this point, because again, we're used to seeing crazy fluctuations from month to month, but we'll have a better sense in a, in a couple more months. Any other questions on the financial reports? All right, then we'll go to our second public comment section of the meeting. Anybody from the public want to make any comment, address the committee? All right, seeing none. Summary of the items recommended for the action meeting. And let me just go back up here. Those are the resolution regarding the bond refunding opportunity, the 2020, 2021 proposed budget calendar, and for October, the 2018, 2019 capital reserve transfer.
That's correct. And alerta, that we'll bring forward at a future finance committee meeting.
Great. Okay. All right. And the next meeting of the finance committee is scheduled for October 7 at 6 o'clock. Anybody from the board have anything else? All right, motion to adjourn? All right.
Thank you, everyone.
We adjourned.